Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I called to order this work session of the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors at six thirty eight P. M. Before we begin, we would like to provide some important information about interpretation services. Please remember to speak clearly and directly into the microphones at a moderate pace. Please do not speak over one another so that the interpreters can accurately convey your message. Thank you for your cooperation. And our first agenda item is the Black Village Family Advisory Committee Dinner Report and Discussion with Francesca.
Good evening, everyone, board members. I'm here to be excited to introduce our first family group that we're having dinner with and having a conversation after school year. We're starting a little bit late, but that's fine. The Black Village Family Advisory Committee started with the support and help of Superintendent Rymon when he was in Assistant Superintendent role. He helped some of our founding members, like Shara who is here and Jelana who is online, as well as some others that were all here to bring together a group of families, family members who have students who identify as Latinx, Hispanic, or Native American. And they had learned a lot from our Latino PACs, who had taught them how to assemble a family advisory group. So I'm gonna introduce to you who's here today. From our team at the district office, I have Jennifer Williams, who is our teacher and special assignments equity assistant of management, who also supports our Black Village Family Advisory Committee. We have also here Sonia, who is our South Meadows B. S. U. Advisor. We have Maji, Majes, who is one of our leaders at Liberty High School, running our B. S. U. there. And then our three board members that are here today, which is Miss Tiffany, who is our chair, Shara Lamshand, who is our vice chair, and Soray, who is a board member. Also online is Jelana Cantos, who is an H. S. D. Educational Liaison, who is a non-voting member of the Black Village as a parent and as an employee of H. S. D. And also Nastia Pickery, who is here, also H. S. D. Education Liaison. So I'm gonna turn it over to them. This started over five years ago as a way for our families to come together to voice their feedback, to provide information for us to make our district better, and to be a voice for the students and for our community.
Hello, everyone. It's so awesome to be here tonight. Very grateful. Just to get us started, we wanted to preface our presentation with some of our successes from this year so far. Last year, I had the privilege of working with the Black Village and really spent that time learning the group and understanding how to best support them. And we have a lot to celebrate this year. So so far, over at the beginning of the school year, we were awarded, H. S. D. was awarded the Black Village Best Grant, and with that, we've been able to create partnerships with different organizations that have really elevated our students and really supported our community, some of those being Shifted Theory, which is a mentorship program, a nonprofit, P. O. I. C., and REEP, among others. In addition, with the Black Village specifically, we have successfully increased attendance and built capacity. Last year, we were averaging about five, six, ten families, individuals, sometimes students who come with their parents, but this year, we've seen over sixty at some meetings, thirty, forty, really had space in cultivating that community in a very positive way. So we're very proud of that. We're celebrating that. We've also really leaned into collaborating with our Black Student Union. So being the village, the students are also a part of that village. And we've had students attend meetings and contribute to the conversation, use their voices, amplify their voices, but also some of our Black Student, well, our Century Black Student Union has been so gracious enough to support with childcare at some of our meetings. They ran a movie night one time, had the students or little kids just go watch Prince and the Frog while their parents were having, you know, difficult conversations and really being serious. That's been super wonderful, and we love that collaboration and continue to build that. We've also supported with Elevating Student Voice, and we also would like to invite you to some of our upcoming events. We have our Black History Month Celebration on February twentieth, so next Thursday. We'd love to see all of you there. We're having Ethiopian food and soul food come out, and a student performer, Haitian performer as well. So we're gonna be celebrating and elevating the diaspora. And then also on March sixteenth, we are holding a screening of the film Black Girl in Suburbia, created by a filmmaker who is native to this area. Her name is Melissa Lowry, and we'd love to have you all there as well. With that, I will pass it to our members. Thank you so much.
So we kinda wanted to go over some of the asks we had for previous years. On these things. So I joined pretty much the first year, and the first time we had a sit-down, I think, was twenty twenty-two with the school board. And some of the asks we had were, we, there was no Black Liaison position, and we said we desperately need that in order to grow, which I can say is absolutely true. We now have two, thank you very much, and they're absolutely amazing, and they're the big reason for those successes we had, just shared with you. We wanted better access to advanced classes. We haven't really seen an increase in that. So that's why that one has an X mark. We wanted more culturally responsive pedagogy in our classrooms, and again, we haven't really seen that yet. We asked for equity training for families because, you know, the students learn things from home, and parents, it's hard to teach what you don't know. So if there was a place for parents to learn about equity as well, to support the students, their students, that would be great. Haven't seen any movement on that. And we came to the board with an issue of the use, prevalence of the use of the N-word, and how traumatic it was for our students to experience. And then twenty twenty-three, after we got our first Black Liaison, we're like, wow, this is amazing, can we have more? And we did, we got our second one, and it's, and it's been amazing. We asked for a really robust anti-bullying campaign, and we didn't really see that. We wanted more access to mental health support. That one is a checkmark, but it's also kind of like a checkmark with a caveat. We got, there are more calming spaces in high schools than secondary schools now, but there, there aren't the supports we would appreciate that are culturally responsive in nature. The hard conversation trainings, those have now been more mandated for schools, but I think you guys can see with what's on twenty twenty-four, like maybe those conversations, like that one also is a checkmark with a little asterisk. While the trainings are happening, are they actually effective? And I'll come back to that. And then we wanted an easier way to report bias incidents, and we haven't seen that either. And it's really important to have an easy way for our students to report when these incidents are happening, because without the data, it's too easy to ignore. You don't know what's happening if you aren't asking. So last year, we asked for group support around Black Village recruitment, and that came along with the second liaison. And as you heard, we've had a meeting with over a hundred people. I think our lowest-attended meeting is still higher than our best-attending meeting the year before. So I'm doing great. And that's when I was like, it was possibly gonna snow, and we weren't sure if we're gonna have a meeting, and we still had, like, forty people show up. So thank you. Improved marketing. We've definitely, with the liaisons and being able to break that communication, checkmark number three. We've seen improved attendance and questions and just overall, we've seen improvements for Black Village. So those three were for Black Village specifically. We asked to collect and share targeted data that we've been having. We got a little bit of data this year. We do understand that it is harder to collect, if not impossible, because of the way that synergy designates race. We would love to see statistics for Black inclusive, because a lot of our mixed students get lost in Latino or the multiracial, and I think it's really important to pull out that data, and I don't know if we have a way to do that yet. But again, we don't know what, where we're failing our students if we don't have that data. So it's very important. We asked for help building capacity, because we predicted that with the better communications, a better recruitment, we're gonna now have more people, more members, and we're gonna need the capacity for that, and so we've definitely seen support around that. And spoiler, twenty twenty-four, N-word usage in the school are still, it's still an issue. And I know that there is a task force that is working on this, and so we are looking forward to some movements. That's why it now has a check. But then, like I said, it goes back to that hard conversations training. One of the things that came up a lot was students aren't experiencing staff members interrupting that the way that they interrupt other hate speech. And so I'm not so sure. I think that checkmarks need to have a feedback. All of these checkmarks, honestly, should have feedback loops on there. You wanna be checking in with the targeted base to make sure that these plans that you're putting in, everything you're enacting, is actually working and doing what you want it to do. So even though something might be checked off on that list, it'd be great to have some type of way that you can check in with us and be like, hey, you know, we got you this really good anti-bullying campaign. Have your students, you know, experience, are they still experiencing the bullying level that they were before? Are they feeling more safe and welcome in our schools? So yeah, that's what I'll say about that. Now, we're gonna go to the student voice, and these are actual quotes from our students.
I'm gonna read them for you. We are constantly hearing the N-word used by non-Black students, especially Latino students here at South Meadows. Even when we address it, teachers and students act like it is no big deal. They have been watched those appearances where students have used inappropriate language that is aimed at hurting, degrading, or ridiculing others. These comments are not only racially motivated, but also inciting violence, sexualized our friends' students. As Black students, we feel as though we are truly treated like people who are so privileged in schools. For example, we tell our other students, they ask to shake your grit, give them an N-word pass, or I bet your favorite food is fried chicken, one of them is in Kool-Aid.
Given the recent presidential election, when people find out that we are from Nigeria, jokes about eating fufu, being the porter, or having to survive in waterless countries is something we constantly have to deal with. It is seriously draining. Since I always wear my hair in its natural state, I have had students touch my hair without permission, as if my hair is made out of sheep's wool or if it's even real. I am in dual-language Spanish class, and I'm constantly mocked for the way I look, for the way I dress, or the way I speak. They forget I can understand them, that I hear what they say, and that their words are emotionally and physically traumatizing.
When people call you the N-word, what happens? Well, at my school, nothing. They say, sorry that happened to you, and brush it off. I would like them, the person who said it, to get suspended. I don't think that it should be banned because people say you shouldn't say it. I also think that it is no warning, it's just a thing.
To have monthly reminders about, not just on ban, but just for us to know how it's gonna hurt us, and I would like, and I would like that changed.
And these are quotes we've gotten from our parents in, in the Black Village. Do you wanna read them, or do you want me to?
But in Black Village, Black girls have been unsupported. The school teachers actively chose to support women blind without getting proper information.
Who's there from the council group? He expected my son to leave his girl on his back without accountability to the girls who are racially attacking him, just because they were girls of color.
Without Black Village, my son would have dropped out of elementary school.
It's twenty twenty-five, do better.
Schools should be a safe, supportive environment regardless of school or school.
Actually, we still have to tell you this makes you sad, but I'm so angry.
We're actually just do better.
We need more inclusive regarding, we're really just thinking, more education for our students regarding students, diversity, and other factors.
We need more diverse library options, better representation.
Council support group to talk about Black Brown issues like microaggressions,种族 inequality, and school shootings, identity within mixed races.
We need to close the feedback loop so we know what is being done, and we're going to learn.
We need to find a climate for our students to have knowledge of social, um, and, and our, our, just to get our children.
Those are some commitments we'd like the board to consider for students and families. Our safe spaces for Black students, restorative practices, culturally responsive trauma-informed student services, and streamlining the incident bias report system. Some things to consider for the staff would be safe and inclusive spaces for the staff, intentional recruitment and retention, safe spaces for all Black staff, and consistent protocols and training to respond and interrupt.
And, yeah. I just think that something to also keep in mind is, in order to get these things done, I think that there's a lot of things that needs to be put in practices that maybe the school district doesn't already know. So I think that the mind to do is that, to get more funding. To get more funding to things of this nature, you know, to handle, you know, the mission of Black Village for our, our students.
Yeah, and I, I wanna, again, slash, kind of build upon that, like, we really do appreciate the two Black liaisons we do have, but we also understand that it's not a permanent position, it's grant-funded, one of the positions at least. And just the way that we have been supported by all of our district contacts, Francesca, Jennifer, Deja, Jelana, David, somewhere around here, David, it's, it's, it's necessary and it's important. Yeah, and the work that they do, it's hard to do with as little people as they have for staffing, and I mean, the, Dr. Finn was absolutely amazing, and it's really sad to see that position cut and kind of just the workload being expected to be maintained, because this work is so important. We really need that, for you guys to understand it and make the commitment, but then also have the funding follow that commitment, get this work done. A happier thing. Again, we just want to invite you out to this amazing Black History Month Celebration. Again, wouldn't have happened without an amazing team. We are parent volunteers, and we have done almost nothing this year, and it's amazing. There was a lot more work when, when we started this, this village, and it's really nice to have the support that should be there, and because of that, we can have these awesome experiences for our students. So Black, the history, Black History Month Celebration is next week, South Meadows on Thursday. Our next meeting, everybody's welcome, March fifth, Century High School, and then Black Girl in Suburbia Film Screaming. It's an amazing film. I highly, highly recommend to come. Free tickets, you don't have to pay anything, we will have snacks. That, it'll be at Century as well, March sixteenth.
Can I, oh, yeah. I do have a change on the location, just so.
Oh, okay. That's good to know.
That's still being confirmed, but we backed right up to one of their performances, and they didn't think they could be ready for us. So we're like, working that out.
Okay. Location TBD. Um, do you have any questions for us?
The thing, we have four hype.
Yeah, right. And hopefully, they don't all have production right now. Or hopefully, they do, but.
This is production time. I just wanted to say thank you, guys. Probably one of the hardest things about being a founding member of this organization and taking the step to come forward out of my comfort zone and then to run some of the process, is that I couldn't, or shouldn't, or had to be very careful about how I enter. I'm so sorry, I took that step. This is phenomenal. The growth is phenomenal. It is, it is awesome. I'm usually never without words, but I'm finding it hard to find them today, because I'm thrilled, I'm excited. You're talking about a hundred people showing up. That, we didn't know that. And I'm so happy, because it also means to all the district and to all the people in the district, it also means that we're growing. We're not going away. Right? We didn't get our reparations to go back to another country, didn't work like that. And so we're growing, our presence is growing, at the same time that our population is actually shrinking in schools. Isn't that interesting? And so there's a lot going on right now. I'm urging you as members of Black Village to stay in tune for what's happening at the state level in this, in this long session. It is not serving our schools, and if it doesn't serve our schools, it's not serving you. It tamed us to have to cut certain things. Mental health is an issue that, over, across the board, is not what it should be. It's absolutely, and the idea that you're still hearing the N-word in school is absolutely just unfathomable. And that somebody would think that it's okay for you to, what, you're supposed to let that roll off your back? Why? Why would I do that? And please understand, I recognize that it is a choice, just to tell you to not have to deal with that. It's easier to tell you not to deal with it than it is to discipline and/or take on a child who has a family and a parent who doesn't look like you. That's the reality of the job that we have. And I'm very disappointed that it's still there, but I need you to understand that is not what these people at this table, that is not how we work, that is not what we believe, and it is not what we're fighting for. I urge you to have this conversation also with H. E. A. Nobody ever probably, I tell you, have the conversation with the stu, with the union for the teachers. Have the direct conversation and share this feedback with them as well. We can only do so much from this board, but I'm thanking God that I have a voice here and that we have a presence here. So thank you, guys. Everything, all your hard work.
Any comments from board members online?
Yeah, I had my hand up. I just wanna say.
Here we go.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I really liked the way that you put together the asks from the years past, so that you're also holding us accountable about you've asked us and what we're still needing to work on and continue to work on. It's great to have that visual. One thought that I just had and wondering, especially hearing the student and parent voices, is there ever an opportunity to do a cross-presentation, maybe to the Latinx PAC and have kind of these difficult conversations, courageous conversations, and talk parent-to-parent about things that are happening and also explaining like the impact? Because I think one of the things that you mentioned on there that's really important is that a lot of the behavior is learned at home, and that's outside of our district, you know, as control, but what role can we play to facilitate conversations or to facilitate opportunities for community members, parents to come and, and learn and maybe receive some training that we can facilitate? So that's just something that was a thought of thinking to Nata Francesca or the team.
Well, I'm glad you asked that, Erica. We just recently started with our new task force, where the first phase of it is engagement and partnership. So we have not only gone out to speak with our students who identify as Latino, also those who identify as Black in Holoran Park. In addition, we have gone to our Latino PAC board, as well as our Black Village Board to ask them for feedback as part of Phase One of our task force. What we are doing now as we start to enter Phase Two is really looking on how we can build community together through education. Task Force was formed earlier this year, this calendar year, twenty twenty-five, with the support of Andrea, David, Lindsay, and Bertha, who are our executive directors at Oversea Schools, as well as some people who have reached out to ask to be a part of the team. We had our first meeting last week. Our second meeting is this Thursday, and we're really working on how we need to, how we can help further the education of not only students, but staff and families and community partners. Phase Three will be, how do we look at accountability? And then there will, Phase Four will be a review and a refinement of our plan. Now, we know that this, this process is going to be dynamic, because we are very layered in the approach that we have with bringing our, not only our students together, but our families together in order to make this something that we can find to be sustainable and build capacity with. And we really believe as a team that if we address the harmful impact of the N-word, then what systems and structures we put in place will also help affect other hateful and harmful words that occur in our school. And so between Olga and federal programs and myself working with the Black Village, we've been facilitating some conversations, as well as our L. Y. P. and Chica facilitators of staff members have been going out to our students, and Deja and Jelana have been working with our students in the B. S. U. to utilize them as leaders. We know that the words may not be coming necessarily from them, but they represent leadership in the capacity that they can provide us some feedback and help us guide this work. So more to come on that. I don't know if Travis wants to add any more to it, or if Andrea wants to, but know that it is something that weighs heavy when we hear from our students and our families' voices of the experience that our students are experiencing at school, and that we know that this is something that we need to work swiftly, but, and, fuckfully, as we move forward with the dynamics of the groups that we're working with, knowing that something needs, inaction is action, and so we must take action in some way, shape, or form, in order to ensure our students feel that they have a safe and welcoming school that they belong in.
Right, is that Erica?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up. I think that I love hearing the plan and that there's phases, which is great, because I think that I love hearing the plan and that there's phases, which is great because it like means that we are, um, really being strategic and, and having a path forward. I think to the point around collecting data on bias incidents, that is really, would be really key to have a baseline of like what's happening now so that as we make these improvements or have these things, um, come to fruition, then we have, we can see if things have improved. So I, I don't know where, where we are on that and having some sort of metric or data that we can measure and compare later.
Actually answer that. I appreciate your question. Um, I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank, um, the folks who read the quotes from students and families because I think it was especially powerful for us to hear those voices in the room. And as an administrative team, we heard those voices through a letter that came from South Meadows students and, um, was so powerful that we just, we decided that we didn't want to be leaders in a district where that is going on with our students and that we have to do something different beyond the education that we've already done, beyond the disciplinary systems that we already have to make sure that students aren't hearing the N word in our schools and reporting that adults aren't doing anything about it. So I just want you to know that I feel the power of that and am disturbed and saddened that that's what's happening in our schools as reported by the students that we serve. Um, and thank you for your bravery reading that out loud. That was really powerful. Um, to Erica's question, um, we, we've looked at referral data that relates to the N word being used in, um, a disciplinary action that happens at a school and we've disaggregated it by race. And we're bringing that information along with the verbal data that we've gotten from the conversations that we have with our PACs, with our student leadership groups. And we're talking about the fact that if we were to, on a specific day, say that you get suspended for using the N word, we should predict an uptick in that data, but that over the long haul, if we do our education pieces right, that we'll see, um, a waning of that data. And I want to be real about that because we've set goals as a school district about reducing the number of referrals, for instance, for our Latino male students. And it could be that someday, um, we enact a policy where, where we don't tolerate the N word spoken in our schools and it could be that in the, the week after that, we see an uptick in data. We hope that through engagement and education and then accountability, we can inform folks enough that we stop saying that word in our schools. But, um, I just want to be honest about, um, what we can predict with our data and the accountability that we feel to share that data once our plan progresses. Um, this morning as a K-12 admin team, we had a discussion about the data, the stories of students and families and what our action plan is. And so our plan is in March to have a further conversation about how we create a district-wide policy so that each school can have its own, um, community engagement, its own conversations with students. It's different at an elementary school, at a middle school, in a high school. It's different, um, depending on what neighborhood you live in. But I think this district-wide plan that our team is running is going to be, um, a whole new level of intensity and focus and intentionality on specifically the N word. I also want to be real about one other thing. When we focus on the N word, we have people saying things like, well, what about the word that is used to oppress me? What about the word that's been used to hurt me? And we know that there is hate speech and speech that hurts beyond the N word, but the history of the N word and the, the, the fact that students right now are experiencing the N word in schools, um, has reached a level that we all know is intolerable. And so we are going to focus on one single word. And like Francesca said, we hope that the ripple effect is, effect is raising consciousness about the power of words in general and that we see a downturn in the, in the use of hateful speech in our schools across the board. That could be homophobic, transphobic speech, it could be racial slurs targeted at other folks, it could be ba-, uh, slurs based on religious beliefs. We know that students in the current climate are experiencing more hate instead of le-, of less, and we are upset about it as school leaders. And we're planning, along with our partners, like you all, to do something about it. So thank you for partnering with us to figure out what to do and how to take it on.
Good.
Thank you guys for being here and for reading those difficult words, definitely. Um, yes, and, uh, yes to everybody's other comments, and the, I seem to remember, uh, it's, it's, it's a little concerning that the easier to report bias incident system is not in place. It feels like when we had that conversation, people had started almost diving into the solution space. Were we with it? And to, to hear that it hasn't happened is a little bit disturbing. So I guess my question is, who needs to be connected to whom to, is it not Jordan? Is somebody on Jordan's team, I'm guessing, somebody on Francesca's team, I'm guessing. So like, if it's easier to report, I'm guessing it's a computer thing, right? Like, if, I, my recollection is you're asking for something to be easier to report digitally. Is that about right? Am I remembering?
It could be phone line, be digital, but just like, right now, the process is you have to fill out this lengthy form, you have to mail it to the principal and, um.
That's what I remember hearing. And I remember us all going, well, that should be easier.
I know we talked about like a, a tip line or a hotline before, uh, and I thought there was a tax in place for that, but it's never been like fully developed or anything.
Uh, I think the topics are connected because if it's harder to report incidents, they're not getting accurate data on how frequently incidents are happening.
And to your point, what's the escalation path? Because, for example, I'm already thinking in my head, what can we do? You know, there's a text going to Rose and, and Travis saying, shall we do a visit? Well, let's go together, right? That's what I'm thinking. But what else can we do to make sure that the escalation path is what it should be?
I'm happy to do an update on it. Francesca, do you have information about?
There is on our website, which is, which is the improvements we had made is a way, if you go to the school, that you can link into the building administrator. And that was updated last year. So for example, if it was Century High School, there is a link in there to, um, that you could reach out to David if going to the principal isn't, isn't an option. And on a safe and welcoming school, there are two different options that we can. I think what we have talked about in Black Village is it is a little difficult to find it in the way that the presentation of where to go to get the link of either the tip, what's it called?
Safe Oregon?
Safe Oregon or the.
District app.
The district app. It, you will have to know where to go to navigate in, to get that. I think what also competes with us is there are other districts around us who have, um, different apps, um, different ways that you can immediately do it, um, based on their website of how they report bias incidences through a Google form, which we haven't done in HSC because we have these two other ways plus this layer of, um, being able to reach out to an executive director. Now, what we can do as a team.
You really think that sophomore is going to reach out to the executive director?
No, but there are two other things on, on there that they can easily just click on to if they know where to go.
It's overly cumbersome to me. And I think that's what we're hearing. If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. But it feels like what we're asking a student to do when they experience this level of aggression is overly cumbersome. Am I wrong?
I think it's okay for, if, if you guys want an update on what we're doing, that's a fair ask.
Um, yes.
I'm not sure that we have the.
Sure, we're going to solve it in here today, but i- if the people who are going to solve this aren't in the room or don't work for somebody in the room, then we can figure that out.
If I could add, um, so, you know, if, if there's already a system in place, I, I'm not about reinventing a wheel that, that is already existing, but if there's ways that we can make something a bit eas-, a bit more easier, um, to access or provide a bit more education around how to access those, those different avenues, I think that is, is probably worth, um, worth looking into. And, you know, even right now, I just went into, went on to our district website and I don't know if this is what Francesca you're referring to, but, um, it's the reporting, there's a reporting safety concern and at the very bottom, it, it has different categories around what type of complaint, um, folks would want to, to talk about. And it's, it seems like a, a pretty simple form, but again, I don't know if this is one of the things that have been mentioned here tonight. Um, but I, you know, I, I guess to everyone's point, it, it would be worthwhile to know what all of these avenues lead to and who is on the backend monitoring all of this. To add any new type of reporting system also requires someone on the backend to, to monitor and to follow up on it and, um, and, and that needs that staffing capacity. And so just looking at what do we already have existing and how can we make that more easily accessible, um, and provide some communication and really push it out and make it, you know, just super easy to, to get to either on the website or on a district app is something that, um, I would love a bit more information on. Um, and in addition to that, um, I do want to thank, um, the Black Village family to, for, for coming tonight and giving us this presentation. Um, like Erica mentioned, I also really appreciated the, the list of recommendations that you have given to us, um, and what we have, um, been able to accomplish and, and things that we haven't been able to accomplish. In the spirit of transparency, um, you know, I would love to hear from our staff or, you know, from the, from the cabinet, maybe in a later board update or something around what are some of the recommendations that are feasible and what just isn't feasible? Um, have there been feedback loops on all of those points that have been mentioned? Or are they, are these just recommendations that are floated up? We don't really address it and so then they carry over to the next year? Um, or are these things that we are kind of actively working on? Um, that is something that, that I personally would love to see maybe in a board update or in a, in a previous, or in a future board meeting, um, around really what can we do and what can't we do? And even, even the things that we can do, how can we strengthen, um, how can we strengthen what we already have and either tweak it or make it better for, um, for the purpose of, of, um, this group that is, that is asking for these things? So, um, I, I specifically noted the, the easier bias incident reporting system in, in March, I'm glad you brought that up because, um, I, I do know that there are certain things that we already have in place and if there's ways that we can just kind of modify that to make it a bit more accessible, I think that would, that would save a lot of time.
So ma- maybe in March or, I would like to see it in March because I know it's data that you already have and talking with the cabinet, just let us know, um, what we're already doing, what the escalation path is. Um, and something else that I was thinking Francesca specifically, if you don't mind, I'm thinking that the slide that you, that the Black Village put together about their recommendations from previous years, make that the template for all of our groups so that we understand, because what I'm hoping, or maybe not, maybe we could put all, the boards should be able to put all of that together and then say, okay, this is what this group is, is experiencing, but this group might be experiencing something similar. And then this group is experiencing something similar. That says, that's powerful. That's data right there. And so I'm hoping that maybe we could take that, um, way to go Black Village, make that slide the standard for all of our parent advisory councils so that when they come to us, we can say, what did, what did we promise you year one? Where are you now? That type of thing. So just thinking about it, but I, I definitely want to hear something back, um, from cabinet to let us know how we're doing, how we're not doing and if this, um, reporting structure is not what we think it is. Because if you guys are shaking your head going, yes, really simple, and they're going, it's not, then something's not right.
Can I say something? Um, I think that, um, you know, based on what she said as far as keeping the system in line and just finding other avenues, um, when we look at filing a complaint, this is not just no, uh, average complaint, like, you know, my child, whatever the average small complaint, we're talking about traumatic experiences. And being that we're talking about traumatic experiences, having a student or a parent to hear that their student, you know, they're, they're already complaining that their teacher is not doing anything about it, you know? So to tell them to fill out this huge form, then to contact this person, it's just like, here, pick a number, go fill out a form after they dealt with what they dealt with. So personally, I think that, um, maybe it does need to be tweaked and kept, but we also need to look at different avenues. Um, for these students, it's, it's traumatic. It's traumatic. And to say, pick a number, is, is not okay. It's not okay.
Thank you, Shan, for helping me dial back my emotions a little bit. So I, yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is we're hearing that these aggressions from our students are all too common, much more common than we would like. And hearing from, uh, an invested stakeholder that reporting these incidents is difficult. So I would love an update on, uh, when it occurs, what's the process and how it can be streamlined? Is that a better way to put it than I've worked before?
I think Francesca has worked hard to stand up a system that's the best bias incidenting, incident reporting and documenting system that we have. And so I appreciate the partnership that I see, which is accountability loops. Like, we would like the system to be better, here's the positive or negative feedback about it. I appreciate what you just said about like, reporting a traumatic event shouldn't be a form that a student or a family fills out. It should be held at the school level. And so one of the goals of our current plan is to make sure that schools, teachers and administrators and assistants at schools are responsive and interrupt and have, we're pretty sure they have the skills to interrupt. And if not, um, how do we get everybody the skills to interrupt and then lift the accountability on, um, that so that we don't force a student into fo- filling out a long form to make a report? So thank you for saying that out loud.
Yeah, interrupt and report should be like step one. Cause if the teacher is filling out the report, then the student doesn't have to like relive it as well, or if the staff member. So, and they are probably easier to train on where to go. Like I never would have thought to look for a safety form to fill out if I'm having a racial incident.
Yeah. We, did, we literally have to look under safety in order to find it. And, yeah.
I guess in education speech, we often put safe and welcoming schools, like as our, as an umbrella term meaning emotional safety, um, also physical safety. So we could, that's good feedback in itself to parse those out and be able to identify what the, a light fixture fell on me versus I was racially aggressed with hate speech are different forms of safety and we don't always think.
But I feel like this is a lot of stuff that people don't really know about because they kind of hid it. I don't know if it's not, it's not read out, you know?
Yeah. Most students will not know the digital website if they're looking for a solution. Because when would they have gone to digital, if they were really anything? I, it is a valuable resource for parents and adults to access. But in our schools, we use the school classrooms and also, uh, in the hallways, we have quite a number of posters, there's a lot of gold scores. Um, and we, the only concrete physical, like the data where there is no, piece of information. I, I have seen the, um, all are welcome at the school, um, but it, but the only poster I've seen before recognizing that representing an issue could have been taken in our school is the little flyer on the special academy wall. There's very little recognition that someone could be wrong in our school. And because there's no recognition, there's no way for students to feel supported, um, without having to reach out initially. We'll have to do more done to show that the school supports, uh, more than the bill, a more visible, a more, um, goal, and more start environment goals and where on the unwavering show support specifically having a, than having something available, but not.
I think that it's similar to things like being test guidelines for things like stuff like suicide. They come in and they don't get that. They don't get what you do at a spot on the side. They do all this for the suicide prevention stuff. I think it needs to be something to be said to the students as well. Because I really, I really do think that it also comes to helping the people who are being treated poorly. If you are unable to or struggling to get people to learn and grow to be better, I think it's something to be, hey, here are our resources. Here's how you can get help if you're not, if you really cannot fill out a form right now. I feel like there's been things like I've had my E L A classes interrupted by things like blood drive and things like suicide prevention and all types of abuse. I think this should be one of them. I know this is a very like out stepping statement thing, but I really do feel like this is something that should be.
You're making a statement.
Absolutely. Well, I'll put it there.
Great, thank you. I want to say, well, first off, sorry for the delay. We were backed up by a meeting. And I wanted to say thank you for, you know, giving us this update and sharing stories in those quotes with parents and students. And it's sad to hear that this is happening. And I am glad that these questions have been asked by my fellow board members. Going on and what's happening. And I just wanted to say thank you for being here tonight.
Can I say thank you also?
Yes.
I just, I want to say thank you also from my role. This type of conversation is what's going to help us actually make change. And if you're feeling uncomfortable in this conversation, you're leaning into it and wanting to do better in our community for our students that we serve. And so thank you for folks who came in and gave voice to the things that are impacting students. Thank you for your courage and thank you for having open dialogue with our school board and with our cabinet group. Students, thank you for chiming into the conversation. This is how we make community change and thank you for your leadership, everybody.
I'd just like to say thank you all for having us and listening and supporting and coming up with more amazing ideas. And thank you for the support. Like, there were checkmarks on that list. There were, there are amazing things that the school district is actually stepping up and doing. And we don't want it to, you guys, like, there is definitely room for improvement. But I feel like we're making that momentum. So thank you.
Celtic Towne, sorry for saying that.
Yeah. And now we're going to go move to our next agenda item to review and discuss the City Charter, City View Charter School Agreement Draft with Brooke and Scott. I'd like to want to say, thank you for choosing the profession of service or a position of Of what I was just reflecting on as we were having. And so as as we're kind of making that transition, what a great group of people to be around the table. Fran was in part of our our presentation today to PK 12. There was a lot of questions around if not now, when, if not who. You know, I just, I so I was thinking about some of those pieces as we are coming together to, and I know we all selected to be here to best serve our community. So thank you for that. And that, I think, is a great example for service and support to our staff, students and community and to always try to be better. In that, we are transitioning to our City View Charter contract. And I don't know how best else to make that transition to more of a technical conversation, but we're just going to do it. The situation page outlines that, and we talked about this in January, that we're on a charter renewal journey. And it started on January 28th. You'll see in the situation page, we, first step was that Nicole, my executive director of City View, submitted the letter on December 4th of 2024. We hadn't held our hearing. And now we're at a space today that we're going to have an opportunity to get into triads, three online and three here, to have some some conversations about what's coming up for you in the current charter draft. What questions do you have? What comments do you have? What feedback do you have? So that hopefully when we get to that step three, which is two weeks from today on February 25th, that's when the board will either approve or state why we don't want to move forward in a renewal process. The renewal process then starting on February 25th gives us 90 days to work in partnership to go back into the draft and refine, refine it to make a final product. So based on your feedback, your questions, that also, you get to the February 25th where we move to approve, we would also use that to then work in partnership and and discuss with Nicole some of those recommendations to insert into the the contract. So to get us into triad, Scott, my amazing partner in this, and I think Michelle is going to try to join us online, just in case there is a technical question that maybe we need her expertise for. Scott is going to facilitate the conversation with our three board members that are online. He'll be taking notes of any comments, questions, suggestions that you have. I will be with the three that are in person tonight. We are going to have about a five minute dialogue in the triads and then we will share that out so both groups can hear from online group and in person group. Those that surround me and the great cabinet committee that I have, they also have different sections within the contract. So for example, if you have a question maybe around safety, we can also flag safety to say, hey, you know, we have a specific question or feedback in that area. So we will also just kind of be around the room if you have some questions along the way. I am going to give everyone a moment to jot down potentially some questions or thoughts that you have individually before we break into the triad.
There's a way for us to do that.
Oh, that's really a good point.
Yeah, unless you have a breakout room, unless you do a breakout room, yeah. Unless we're just going to hear them talking the whole time.
Although I thought maybe, I thought maybe.
No, we'll just hear them talking the whole.
You would just close your ears. And ignore what they were saying. Got it. So because, so because we, oh, okay, okay, because we need to shorten it. Okay. So I think then I still am going to give everyone a moment then online and in person to think about some of those pieces because I also know the contract is pretty long. So I'll give you a moment to review that one more time. It was in your packet. And then to jot down some of the questions and comments that you have, then we write together just to make sure that we have all of that. Because I just want to make sure that we collect all of that to then review it. Does that sound okay? Is that a better strategy? Okay, okay. So those who are online, I'll give you a moment to think about that, jot some down some of your feedback and questions. Those are in person. No one wants me to give out my 100 note cards that I brought tonight. This is really unfortunate.
Where was the FAQ that you sent us before?
The contract, the contract and the attachment.
No, you sent us an FAQ thing before. Do you remember? It's like FAQ of your some questions inserted or whatever.
That was specific to one of our board members who had some questions. And I don't think that went to the whole group. Yeah. So we could definitely bring up some of that tonight as well, but I think that was in a smaller, smaller group.
Felt like you had summarized some of the questions we had asked in our last meeting at some point. Did that not happen?
No.
Okay.
But I can refer just to this. Okay, hopefully that's given everyone enough time to kind of think about some things that they heard from last time, a question or comment that you may have. Scott, now you're going to write some of that down. Brooke, did Michelle, Michelle able to join us via online?
Yes, she was.
Okay, good. Okay, okay. So I think I'll open it up first to the virtual room and we'll jot some of that down. And then again, Nicole is here as well if there's something in specific that she can answer in real time.
I can kick it off. I think I was, I had followed up in an email to you, Brooke, and asked about the strategies or how the charter was looking to continue to diversify their student body and like what, what was the plan for that? And I know I received a report on like findings that they had done previously and maybe some ideas or vision. But I think my question was more around like, like strategically, what was going to happen? And how can we come back and say like, these were the actions and steps that were, that they were going to make? Those are my questions, I think, that I asked before and I, I just wanted to ask them out loud here tonight as well.
And I can, Erica, I've really been thinking about that, the feedback that you provided. I think in Appendix A in the accountability report is where we can work in partnership. Nicole is shaking her head, but I'll give her an opportunity also. The charter schools' longitude of performance growth targets are aligned to our school districts and also have the same focal group. I think that's one space where we could outline that in Appendix A for accountability, just in terms of student focal groups and where they're at in third grade reading attendance to provide more context. Is there something else when we look at especially that accountability area and holding something in in Appendix A that we could also work in partnership to provide?
I think I just like, I mean, one of the things I just wanted to mention is when, you know, the last time I think that they, that the charter had a renewal was when it was a completely different board. So it's also just that we are a very different board than what was before. And we've also moved in a different direction with the district, especially having like a strategic plan in place, having metrics and then measuring ourselves and coming back. And so that's what something that I was expecting to have similar in our partnership is, okay, so we we want, we have this data and we have these goals. And then there's going to be activities that I can go look back later and say, these things happened and here's how we met or did we meet or not meet our goals.
I think that's really helpful and especially good for Nicole to be hearing as well if they're working on their next strategic plan as well right now in the spring. So what you're sharing, I think, is also great for her to be hearing as she's helping to facilitate that process. Nicole, is there something that you'd like to add in this conversation in this accountability area?
If you come get closer to the microphone, the people on mine aren't going to be able to hear you back there.
I don't think there's anything further beyond the accountability measures. Our focal groups are similar and we can add to that. I think we're just in the process of developing the new strategic plan so that we can align further with the strategic plan that H F B already has in place. So I think that there's just some work that still needs to be done and I'd be happy to report back on what that looks like to the board when that becomes more developed over
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Erica, as well because, you know, I mean, our accountability is so important. And so I think that's really valuable for us to work in partnership to not just show up clearer in the next plan. So thanks for going first. Anyone else?
This is Sheen. I had a, I had a question or I guess a comment around section six that talks about enrollment and admissions. Specifically, I'm looking on page eight, for those of you who are following along in the packet. It talks about or alludes to an equitable lottery. And the question, or I guess the the point of concern that I have, especially following the the article that was released back in December around previous board members red flagging students, having folks who are already in the school reapplying for lottery, but those who are red flagged for having bad behavior, not being accepted in. And that was kind of their work or workaround for, for kind of getting rid of students with with quote unquote, bad behavior. That seemed really troublesome for me. And even in looking at this new, or even in looking at this document where it says, where is the exact language? Then the charter school will conduct an equitable lottery in a manner determined by the charter school and consistent with state law. Is there a way that we can add more language in this document about what that equitable lottery looks like? Or if there have been changes to that practice to where some of the things that that particular article had referenced doesn't happen in the future? So that was my kind of my first big point regarding the contract language. That also brings me to, you know, as I've been thinking and and reading more about City Charter View and I didn't see any language even in this contract around board governance. And that was one of the the questions that I had leaving the the board meeting last month was really around what kind of supports and accountability measures there are for board members, especially in in the place of governance over, over the charter school and and ensuring that new board members, you know, seasoned board members alike are are held accountable to a certain standard so that unfortunate situations like what happened with, you know, a few previous board members don't happen again and and really trying to safeguard the students and and the families that that attend City Charter I know that was a loaded comment slash question, but those were kind of enrollment and admissions with a lottery system, kind of vague. That was one, one key thing. And then board governance and accountability and and really transparency around board governance was, was my second big topic.
I think in section six, I see where you're talking about. So I'm just making a note of how can we maybe bolster that that piece to be a little bit more descriptive in the lottery piece? I also just want to give a couple of notes if she wants to share where where she's at currently in lottery or if that's changing for especially some of what was, came out in December. And then I'm also hearing to add something around board governance moving forward and thinking about where to place that within the contract. Let me see if I can catch all that. I think the first, I think one of the positive outcomes of what occurred in December is us to take a step back and really look at our processes and procedures in regards to board members onboarding requirements, qualifications, terms, all of those pieces. And I think that that's the first step that we we did in January. Some of that work is still in process. It's not all finalized, but that is something that we're working through defining a better picture of. Our board developed a governance committee that really prioritizes policy revision, board ethics, those components. Again, it's
Again, it's still a work in progress. It is new, it's in, in process from the work, from things that obviously transpired in December. So that's where we're currently at in the process. And so I think that adding that governance piece makes sense to, from a, from a HSD standpoint, I think that makes, I think that's understandable. The other piece in reference to the conversation in the, in the article, the person that made those comments were referencing a charter school in Nevada. It was not referencing our school. Our lottery system is an automated computer program that automatically runs when, basically, we tell the administrator, the person that runs the program, to run it. So that's kind of, when we go through right now, we are not in the lottery process. We're still an open enrollment, it's waitlist go. So we have open houses. We try to market and target, obviously, Hispanic communities and other communities within our area so that we can be reflective of the demographics of the district. And then as we go forward, we're required, based on how the contract is written, to run two lotteries, separate lotteries. One typically occurs in March and the second one occurs in late April, early May. And then from that point, we continue the enrollment process. Through students within the HSD boundaries have first priority. If the waitlists are exhausted, we shift to students that are not within HSD bounds. So currently, as we've grown our school, middle school has a little bit more flexibility. There have been students that are from Beaverton or Portland that have been able to enroll. But typically, our waitlist, I think last week, we had our last open house had 300 people on it. We had 150 for kindergarten and 150 for close to eighth grade. And I'm not sure if I answered all the questions, but I, I tried.
Thank you. And I appreciate the clarification with the lottery.
This has spurred me to ask an additional question. Thank you for answering the question in my head, which was, are they really working to try to make sure that the charter school reflects what we are? So you answered that question, thank you. With the lottery, can we talk about the data behind the lottery? Do we, well, first of all, let's go to the contract. The contract might need to reflect in just a bit more detail what the lottery process is.
In Section 6, I'm thinking.
Yes, absolutely. Second paragraph. That's the big point. The second thing I'm thinking is that you've been there for like, like, from the beginning, right?
Not technically, no, but almost 20 years.
Okay, well, that's long enough. How many times in the past five years have we had a wait?
A waitlist? Pretty much the entire time. There's been certain grades that have not had waitlists through overtime. And typically, it's kindergarten probably has had one always. And then it starts to decline slightly by the grade. We have an awkward waitlist because our middle's holistic through eighth. But obviously Hillsborough's seventh and eighth, so our waitlist is a little awkward there, meaning that waitlist in sixth is a little bit shorter than seventh. And typically, our waitlist does decline in eighth grade because it's hard to come into a school, a smaller school environment for one year. So that waitlist is typically shorter.
Eventually, I didn't have the, the time to find, read the contract. So maybe, so maybe this is a question to answer later and follow-up email. On page 19 of their presentation, they had eight asks of the district. An ask is also like maintain current terms, that's also an ask. So at some point, can you summarize the district's position on those eight asks?
Yes.
There's no satisfactory outcome as far as the district is concerned on those.
I can do that right now.
Okay.
So in that slide where it said Q and then A, each person who kind of oversees that specific area has provided feedback and has responded to Nicole as well, so.
And that's reflected in the contract?
Yeah, and that's reflected in the contract.
Like, just the summary of the thing, it's all woven in there somewhere?
Yes. So then what we did is that then Michelle, I think, has been helping Scott and I. And she also reviewed that to see where those things would fit if we did say, okay, we're going to change this specific area. But what you see on that slide from our presentation is what we all agreed upon in, in our response and also had shared with Nicole as well.
We agreed to, oh, I see, so the A is our response?
Yes.
So our, our response is put, if the, where it says maintain current terms, we think that's fine?
Yes. And then where it says, like, there's an ask to increase enrollment, that we are doing that. If there was, there was one about.
SRO, we can't really control it.
Right. And so that was our response back that they helped to put together is that we don't have enough SROs at this time to be able to meet that ask.
So like the Nutrition Services was a big ask. I don't quite understand what our answer is, what, what?
It said if City View has additional funds, that they could contribute to, to catering services. And if we have the bandwidth for that, they could purchase meals.
Oh, so I see. So that you asked if we could, you could fold into our lunch program?
Yes.
So I guess, when you say fold into our lunch program, does that mean like sort of the surface level of we'd like to get lunches from you, so we'd have to make lunches? Or is that we'd like to be included in the qualifications we have to buy free lunch for everybody?
I think initially it would be to be included within the contract. We have a separate contract with a different company. So that would be the ultimate goal, but I'm not sure if that is a feasible ask based on how things are set up with the district. And I know that there was some transition with Nutrition Services as well. Conversation, really.
Encompass by HSD Lunch Program. We recently switched to, we qualified, HSD qualified to provide free lunch to all students. You're hoping to get that program extended to you guys? Or you're just looking to figure out a way to use HSD as a vendor for your lunches as opposed to your current vendor?
I think we would like to encompass, be folded into HSD. And if that isn't feasible, we would basically scale back to lunches, just looking at lunches, catering services.
So at the time of the response, our stance was that they couldn't be folded into the program that we currently offer because of the bandwidth that we have within our department. So the answer, unless I'm, I'm looking at page to see if there's change, is that if City View would like to purchase services from us, we could look into that. They want to switch contracts. And again, deciding if our catering services also have the bandwidth to provide that on a daily basis to their location.
Yeah.
I think that hasn't changed. The response hasn't changed. But we do have a new Executive Director of Nutrition Services. I'm happy to check in with her, but right now it's status quo.
Is this a thing that anybody feels like needs to be resolved for the contract to go forward?
I, I don't think it has to be resolved because we can just maintain what we have been doing currently, what, what City View has been doing.
We saw it didn't really involve us in their lunch program with the.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think, I think just thinking about the, the bandwidth of what we need to do for our students that is serving HSD for now is not. As we move forward, we can always look at that. But I don't think it's something, we would just continue with what we are, how it's currently operating is what we are saying we need to do right now based on our bandwidth in our nutrition.
After the new person gets settled, we may be able to revisit it? Yeah, and we need, what, Olga, Director of Federal Programs, to figure out if, if we could encompass that in the free lunch program like that.
And I would also say just something.
You're in zero and it's above my pay grade, so.
Something for us to also know, right, is that when we go to February 25th, the decision of us moving forward and then that 90-day window to figure out some of these nuanced details, that's when that starts, that's when the timer starts. At February 25th, based on the decision of the board, we work in partnership over 90 days to also nuance, one, the feedback and some of the things I'm hearing from you that you say I want to see in the agreement in specific sections, but then also to revisit anything and that back and forth conversation of the contract to finalize it by May.
So February 25th is not our, yeah, we agreed the contract, sign it. It's, yes, we should, we should, it's worth it for both sides to continue the relationship, let's have it on the contract.
Right. So your situation page will read something like, you are collectively giving, you know, approval to move forth in a 90-day window of a, a contract discussion. And based on the draft, though, that you currently have before you, and then we would finalize that within that 90-day window of time. I've really become a charter school agreement expert. I might need Michelle still on the screen. To be with us, but.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Welcome to you.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. Hi there, Booker. I have done this before. So Michelle's been a great.
Yes, yep.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Anyone else on the screen there would be good if I make sure I did collect one, no card of, of feedback.
Yeah. I just want to say, I want to say thank you for Nicole coming and, and being willing to answer our questions that we have. I don't have anything specific. I, Brooke, I had sent you the information, some just general things. It was more, more on the, on the HSD side than, than City View side and just curiosities on my point. So I'm good with what we have.
I just want to say thank you again. This is the first time that this board has done this. So thank you for answering all of our questions and Brooke and Adria for becoming charter experts.
Really. So fun. We're a good team. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Our next agenda item is graduation rate update with Adria.
I've also got Stephen Nissman here. He's our executive director that oversees all of our high schools, including HOA. So I might stop on. So we are, it came to, little, little changes. But we do understand our graduation data for the class of 2024. Remember, we only live about six months behind before it becomes finalized. And we'll be able to take a look at our focal group and understand our on-track data for our current classes. So kind of where we landed in 2024 and what's upcoming in our group moving forward. So just to, again, it's weird because I know we're looking at the class of 2025 right now, but let's anchor back to the class of 2024. And this was their experience in our four years of high school. So they had a distance learning hybrid freshman year. They had a sophomore year that was returned to the school. Both of those years provided unique experiences and challenges for our students. Again, in both of those years, they were definitely, definitely challenged us. Their senior year is what we were saying was a more difficult year as well as their senior year being more.
I don't know if I'll be here next year and go forward, but like, for as long as I'm here, every time we talk about a cohort of students, I love this information because it's very, it still remains influential to think about how their K-12 experience was influenced by. So thank you for including this one.
Well, don't worry, I'm always going to have it there to say, for classes that are coming as well. Don't worry. And I always have to go back to it to remind myself what happened in those years. And this, I showed you last year as they were concluding their year, I think we had this data. But this is how this group of students started their 12th grade year in the class of 2024. So we had roughly about 24% of them were off track at the start of their senior year. And this percentage is a little more typical of our pre-pandemic pandemic year. If you dig back into your memory or your board files, you'll remember the class of 2023 when I shared that data. They started their senior year with about 33% of them off track. So just keeping in mind, you know, the, again, moving away from the pandemic and where students are on track. So this is how they started their senior year. And again, a little more pre-pandemic numbers. And this is our data for the 2024 school year. And we've broken it out by each of our comprehensive high schools, including HOA and then our overall HSD overall. What we saw was some, some good gains in most of our schools. And overall, as a district, we are really excited. Our four-year, our four-year graduation. I have a laser stare. Oh, I do, I do have a laser. Yes. I am sorry, and I'm in. Well, in the process. This is the class of 2022, the class of 2023, and the class of 2024. This is one of, this is actually our best graduation ever since ODE has started calculating it in the cohort where we're not in the. So, and our rate was a total of 1.37% compared to the last year. So this is the four-year graduate report. That brings, which also is getting really close to 90% despite these students that receive potentially a DED or an extended diploma. So really exciting numbers for us that I'm super proud of. A reminder that our strategic plan goal is to be at 88.8% by the end of 2027. So I feel like we are making a progress in that. And it's really exciting to see the growth that has occurred in our school.
So let me clarify.
Okay.
This is Hannah saying, don't hang.
Try not to mind you too.
HSD, that's district wide.
Yeah.
Okay, so district wide, we're.
87.55.
So that is.
We are on that wire here, Amber. I feel, I, I feel great about our work and our strategic plan. And I think when people talk about accountability and track work and being focused on our students and all the things that we do to ensure that our students hopefully will cross the finish line in those four years, we are doing those things. We are holding our schools accountable, we are having conversations. And I think that is paying in what we are seeing as we are moving forward.
So now I have another question.
Yes.
I'm doing it again. Okay, so I'm partial to this one because that's where my kid, okay? These flipped. I'm trying to figure out what happened. Now, the 2024 rate at Century that shot up to 90%, they fell back. It was, is there something special or is there any in the, that, I just found that to be curious, that's all.
Um, here, here's why, because we had a transition at Liberty. We had a switch, and this is not in a negative. We also were, had, Mr. Timmons had left Liberty trying to find a high school principal. Had an interim for one year because at the time, the school, we wanted to make sure we had the best candidate that we could find. And we were also filling, filling that with Michael Roger Will, who agreed to come out of his identity at the school. So we were transitioning as a school. I think as we move forward for Liberty, a school over there who is also now immersed in these systems and tracking that and working through that too. I think that, that doesn't mean that Mr. Will or the team or the teachers weren't doing. I think it was just a transition year that had a little bit more bumps in it as we were working to make that happen as we worked to be a new principal for Liberty. I don't know, do you want to add anything?
Well, I would add that whenever we get closer to 90% of the graduation rate in any building, maintaining that 90% is not precarious, it's just a lot of work to make sure you're managing to that 10% of student population. It's just finite, it's just a finite number. And so any fluctuation either way. And so, any fluctuation either way is going to move that up or down a couple percentage points. And you referenced Century as well, I know that great increase of Century, one of the highest in the state, um, last year, I think the third highest school in the state in terms of graduation rate. When you get, that's great from 85 to 90, but when you get to 90, you're talking five kids, 10 kids, and so it moves, it moves really close and that just does this a lot. Uh huh. Yeah, I know, it's good.
Okay, quick words. We can do questions at the end too, I promise, I opened a slide for that. Also, just wanted to give you a reference point, this is on the chart as well, but just a reminder of our last six years of data, so this is 2019, it's pre-pandemic, and then moving forward, the blue line is us, the red line is the state. At the state level, it's a little bit more of a flat line for us, we are definitely seeing a movement upward, particularly this year. We held the last two years' range and definitely this year was one of our stronger statistics. Just a reminder, just a teaser alert, next meeting, Brooke and Beth are going to be talking about our strategic plan, and this is where I talk about like the components of accountability and our goal for our focal groups and the work that we are doing. This has not been updated yet, as soon as we are done with this presentation, we'll be working on getting this updated for your next presentation, but this was our goal overall for this year, this conversion rate at .87. We had a goal of just the focal group that was experiencing homelessness to increase by 6.54, and for our students that are accessing special education services, we are going to talk about where we ended in those focal groups upcoming here in the next slide. So, just wanted to remind you again that accountability and that's actually one of the key elements that we set out to do in our, in our plan. I'm going to kick it over to David to talk a little bit more about our focal group.
Yeah, we go into this slide here, this slide is defined by race and/or ethnicity. We use the federal and state definitions, so that's why the top gets reported by state and federal definitions, so we're trying to keep our students in that group. We do know that, for example, the multiracial group is defined by self-identification, and that could be multiple different compositions, we just can't segregate that out, so it just becomes a whole number for multiracial. But I really want to focus on this slide on just a couple areas. The first one would be that top row with Hispanic and Latino students. And if we look at the 22,023 grad rate, and we're looking at 84.16, and then the 24 grad rate is 86.24, that's a delta change of 2.08 positive. Keep that number, and if you go to the bottom row with our white students, you'll see there's an increase there as well of just .18. But if you look at those graduation rates, we are closing the gap between our Hispanic students and our white students, and the closing of the gap is a great accomplishment for us, it's work we still need to do, but we're seeing, that is an important area to talk. Hi, the American Indian Alaska Native. Look at the data suppressed number, anytime data comes to us from the state, if there's fewer than 10 students, that data is going to be suppressed, therefore we can't report, and the reason for that is we could identify the students. If we dug enough and we asked enough questions, we only have four high schools, comprehensive high schools, we could identify, so we try to keep that data suppressed with that knowledge. Look at the graduation rate this past year, 58.82%. Look at numbers, so the numbers of students in that category are pretty small, so the N number, which is the whole number, the raw number, directly impacts. That number's not great, it says we have to do supporting students with that identifies as American Indian or Alaska Native, but once again, that number's small, and there's no excuse for that, it's just the way the numbers work.
Of course. We, in my day job, we have whole groups of people who are interacting with the tribes and the sovereign nations that cover them and encompass them, are we doing the same?
Yes and no. So, I think a lot of our students that identify in this category work with NAMI, which is the local Native American support network out of North Portland. We work with students based upon individual needs through the counseling structure that we have, but I wouldn't say that we lean into local tribes for the support. Do you want to add on that?
Yeah, what I can add is that we do have Barb Frinkum, who has come and spoke with our group, and she supports and works with this group directly. The categories, categorization of this group is interesting, and I think Frank could probably talk to this a little bit more, there's the group that he works with that identifies as that, and then there's also the level in which the paperwork exists for the tribe, the tribal affiliation, so there's kind of some nuances to that.
I would also add, and we have a meeting this Thursday with our tribal leaders to present our next integrated guidance plan, and as we've learned, our integrated guidance plan reflects our strategic plan, and we're bringing forth our current data to say, here's where we're at, how can we get better, what are your recommendations, here's what we have outlined in our plan this far, is there something that we need to nuance moving forward in the next two years of integrated guidance to help also support our data? So, with all of that, and that's something new for us to be doing because we hit a threshold of funding, which is, I think, $40,000, that now we get this opportunity to consult with our tribal leaders in a different way than we have before.
The two tribes that we will be, have conversations with are the Colette's and the Grand Ron. And when the state reports, it's reported by students who have their, what we would call papers, that they've been identified as an affiliate of an actual tribe that we identify in the state of Oregon. However, when Barb works with our students, it's not only those, many people because of what has happened in our country over the years, they lose their tribal affiliation, and so there's a self-identification process where people know what tribe, tribe or tribes that they're identified with. So, when Barb goes to work with our students who identify in this category, she works with all of them, it's not just the ones that are tribal affiliated, which is the number that reflects there. So, there's a little bit of sway in that number, that that's not really truly representative of all of our students who do identify as Native American or Alaska Native or American Indian, because that is a group of people who actually have the documentation that supports them saying that they are tribal affiliated.
Thank you, that is a consensus to what we are feeling as well and experiences, so spot on, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Mark, you have a question?
2023 data suppressed. Grad rate for 2024, that's 10 or under is what he said?
That number was 10 or over because we can show it, so in that group.
The data suppressed one was 10 or under.
Yeah.
10 or under. So, in 2024, we didn't go to 100, we went to 15.
To 17 graduates, and I can actually dig down in that data if you want, but within those 17 graduates, or students, roughly 14% of the non-graduates were on an alternative certificate, which doesn't count towards a graduation diploma, so it's not in that number. And then we've re-engaged 28%, or 28.5% of those students back in the five-year completer data. This data is only graduation cohort data, so there's 28.5% of those non-graduates reconnected this year through the work at the high schools and Oak Street. So, that number will go up as we look into the completer data.
But like, yeah, with 17, just a couple makes a huge difference percentage wise.
Yeah. I wanted to highlight this slide before I move on to the next slide, but if you look at the 24 grad data and look at those numbers, we are above the state average in all of these categories minus the American Indian Alaska Native. So, we are above the state average in those categories, so we're actually doing really, really well in the work that having our students graduation. And this is work that happens PK-12, this is not just a high school thing, like, when we look at graduation, it is a continuum of work from the moment a student enters school to the moment they graduate, walk across that stage. All right, let's go to the next slide. Oh, yeah.
Big number on there, just heard from the Black Family Building, that our Black students are struggling, and this is more data that supports that.
And we wrote the African-American Black Student Success Grant this past year to get support for our Black identifying students, this is data that we knew was coming out, we looked at our senior on track. Data last year, we recognized that our Black identifying students last year were struggling to maintain those and get those credits. So, this is data that just reaffirms what was talked about earlier.
Yes, just to break my break three. You're middle.
Yeah, thank you for raising that, Mark. Going on to the next slide, this is focal groups from a different lens, we're looking at student identifying groups, for example, with disabilities, migrants, et cetera. Once again, delineated by state and federal group names, so this is for reporting mechanisms. Just want to highlight the two columns that are in blue, the 2024 grad change.
Students with disabilities, we did see a decrease in last year, 19% in terms of students good than I. We did see a decrease also for former English learners, so those are students that exited EL services prior to high school. 25%. And then we saw some increases with our migrant student population, our homeless student population than at any time in high school learners. So, we saw some growth over time for many of our, of our groups. Once again, if you look compared to the state average, we're doing really well across the students, so our data is showing some, some growth.
I'm sure, but that's a pretty good slide.
That's a good slide, that's a very good slide.
I think, you know, Steve shared this in our PPT, because it's important. There's some really great work that we are doing, and it doesn't mean we let our foot off the gas in any way, shape, or form, but I think it's also the reminder of the systems that we are coming back to, that, you know, that are getting tighter around, supporting our students, and doing, and doing things that we need to do, and we will continue to do those things, but we also want to just, you know, we can pat ourselves on the back for some of these things, but also acknowledge there's still things we're going to do to keep moving forward, and we feel good about a lot of this, for sure.
Yeah, this is a, this is a great slide, this is something we should be proud of and the work that we're doing. To kind of highlight these last two slides, we'll go on to the next slide. Some highlights that we see here, the opportunity gap between our students that identified as Hispanic or Latino and our students that identify as white is a difference of 1.55 percentage points. Let's just pause.
Exactly.
Let's just pause, because that right there, the district, is amazing, it's phenomenal actually, and that's collective work for people in this room and people in every building across the system. Little point number two, students that identify as migrant, as I mentioned in the last slide, students that were ever English learners and/or English learners in high school experienced an increase. Students who identify as Black African-American experienced a decrease, we just mentioned that as well. Students experiencing a disability experienced that decrease of roughly 1%, and a slight decrease in the language learners, but we're still over 90%, so that's really important to say. Of this work, we have re-engaged with roughly 30 students. As of today, we've had 17 students, I'm getting a diploma this year, or through GED.
So, we'll get them in this year.
Yeah, so those are from the fifth year data, but that's 17 students, and there's more students who are over in diploma plus, and I can just say anecdotally, when I'm at Oak Street and I go in the diploma classroom every single day, there are more students this year attending than there were last year. And it might be because I'm more attuned to what's going on, but it's just heartwarming to see the engagement that's happening at Oak Street. And the next slide has to be Adria's fault.
This is why I do this, it's not a competition, but maybe secretly in my head it's a competition. So, out of the six largest districts in HSD, which are, if we put them all together, Portland Public, BSC, Salem Kaiser, Ben LeFine, and North Parkland, Ben LeFine and North Parkland are probably the two that are closest in size to us, but again, those are the top six districts that are size-wise in our state. What I want to just highlight is, again, the hard work of our staff that do this every day, the highest grad rate for students who identify as Hispanic Latinos, the highest grad rate for students who identify as migrants, the highest grad rate for students who are former English learners, and then a significant higher than that, and the highest grad rate for students who are English learners any time in high school, the highest grad rate for students that are experiencing homelessness, homelessness, the second highest grad rate for students experiencing disability. The other thing I want to note is, overall, also had one of the highest increases of our overall graduation rate among the six. There was only, Ben LeFine was the only other district to bet had a large overall increase of 1.6%, a little bit higher than we did. Salem Kaiser had an increase of 0.3%, and the rest actually experienced a decrease. So, I feel like in a time where we are hearing messages around schools maybe not doing the accountability, I feel like our district is doing the accountability and the work that goes into what it takes for our students to cross that finish line.
Are you sharing that?
Yeah.
We did, we did get the press release.
I did.
You had a great press release.
I'm sorry, I missed the press release.
So, it just, again, I think this is really amazing, and I think there are things that attribute to this, I think about our dual language program, the fact that we're, well, we know we need to go faster in the diversification of our workforce, there are things that we are doing that are more than just getting the credit from high school that are having our students feel like they are connected to us. I think, I know, I know there are things that we need to work on, and we've heard about some of those things tonight, that is collective, that is, and it's pretty amazing.
I think when we share that slide with the principals and the building administrators, just pausing to reflect on that, you know, there are, there's no other district in the state can say what we just said on that last slide about the, the work and the growth, and so, just the continued support that, that board gives us and the work that our buildings do is just amazing. And Mark, this next slide's for you. We should call this Mark's slide, this is our graduation classes moving forward slide, the COVID impact. It is true that the impact of COVID is waning, like, the behaviors in buildings are much different this year than last year, and last year was better than the year before, but we're, we're seeing things, but it still exists, it's a reality that we, that we can't ignore. So, starting at the bottom, the current freshman class, a cohort of 2028, they were in sixth grade when they returned to school, fifth grade was distance learning, which for us seems like, you know, so long ago, but for them, that's formative, those are formative years in a child's learning experience. For our sophomores, class of 2027, seventh grade return, sixth grade distance learning, fifth grade, and it was March closer, that's sort of the end of their elementary experience, and then the beginning.
Yeah, and 27.
Yeah, that's a big one.
And 25 for that matter.
Yeah.
Because you want those to send it backwards in a new building.
Yeah, the transition years, so those are the ones you need to look at, because not only are you navigating a rough transition in life, in academic learning and in school, you're now at home.
I feel like I could, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I feel like I could speak here because I am.
Speak anytime.
I went through the sixth grade March closure, and I had a very unique experience with it, and I think a lot, like, not just me, but my entire class, I had just been getting out of, I believe, elementary school, and it was one of the last days I was there, and I remember being told, you're not going to school for the last day, and that was, that was, that was crazy to me, like, I feel like, and then seventh grade distance learning, I mean, all of this is impactful because I, these are core memories, the thing I just explained to you about being told, you're not going to school, it's, it's formative because it's the years that I remember going through, and I feel like it's better that I express it here in this board, because speaking from experience, I think puts more weight on this. I went through the distance learning, I know I did better on distance learning, not everyone did, and I returned to school, and it's, it's a very impactful experience, and I feel like I want to make sure that I can explain that it was.
Adrian, are you a current junior or senior?
I'm a current junior.
20%. That, what you just shared, actually, for all of us, I can't think of all the adults, but for me, it solidifies that we can't forget about the impact that it had on development and that, and learning. and that and learning. So thank you for sharing. It's really powerful. Going on to the next slide, we're going to look at on-track data. So on and off track data. And a couple of points as we look at this slide. The state of Oregon and HSD have different metrics. When we, when we look at on-track data, the state of Oregon is just if you have six credits. Is it the freshman or the freshman has earned six credits, then they're on track. It could be in any course. In HSD, we look at the core courses. Want them to be a 3.5. And we've talked about this in the past. And just know that. So when we're looking at our data, we actually are looking at really tight, specific data points. With, so when you look at this year's class, the class of 28, you'll see a decrease that are actually from last year. What we haven't done yet, because this is brand new data, is look at the, the subpoints within that data. We do know that last spring, we changed our calculation method with ninth grade on track, so it can become more accurate. And we seem to look at the data to see what that is telling us. But we did see a small decrease this year compared to last.
Change of the calculation did, began to include different or no, or did it remain on core?
Same on core. We looked at a semester point, not at the year mark. And we changed the semester point. And so that's why, why we're looking at different data points. Go to the next slide. We're looking at tenth grade data. So if you think about, let's say there's 25% of students off track last year, going into 10th grade, so this would be spring term of the freshman year, we actually saw an improvement of students. So more students were on track and fewer students were off track. We dropped that by roughly nine percentage points. That's, that's a growth for a second semester. So the interventions that we are doing, which would be real-time interventions, it would be looking at summer school supports, it would be looking at academic options. Those interventions are actually working. We also know that if we can be on track by the end of the 10th grade, the chance of graduating actually quadruples by the time they're seniors. Because if we go to the next slide, we also know that in 11th and 12th grade, we're going to see a growth of students who are not on track. That's natural. It's not abnormal to see, to see more students off track. That's because of the academic jump. It's because of students going into the workforce. It's because of multiple interests. It's because of CTE pathways. So you normally see an increase of students off track, but by the time they get to the end of the senior year, you will see, we want to go to the next slide, you will see that roughly 25% go back down to 10 percentage points. That's just normal reticulation data that we see in a high school. So our on-track rate is looking pretty good. This 12th grade number, going into 12th grade, you go, whoo, we have kids off track. What we need to do is identify those kids, make sure that we have the appropriate interventions in place, make sure they're in the right academic class, and then give them the supports and the system to get to graduation. And then really, that's an adult issue, supporting the kids on getting there. This year, looking ahead, was this my slide or this slide? My slide. Pathway Center and Oak Street campus continue to lean into the work that's happening at Oak Street. Multiple ways to earn credit, make sure that we're keeping our options open, you know, Hillsborough Online Academy, how do we provide some hybrid opportunities for students to learn? How do we make sure that we're meeting the needs of kids through academic options and the comprehensive? We've worked this year to expand workshops through grants, onboarding of POIC at Hill, Hill High and Oak Street, bringing in REAP at Century and Liberty, actions at middle school, so we can get some community partners supporting students, on-track professional development. We have spent a lot of time this past year with our ninth grade through 12th grade admin, grad coaches and teacher leaders, looking at on-track work, aligning the system to move forward. All, every school, high school now has kind of revamped their access and advisory program, so we can get more weekly teacher access, so kids can go in and make up tests on a more timely basis. That's a shift in all the high schools this year. Been working on course outcomes, which are standards, so learning targets. Going into next year, we'll be onboarding course outcomes in all the high schools. That way we can really lean into a specific area that a student, we can pull out that data and provide intervention in that area. So we can say, for example, in language arts, students struggling with expository writing, course outcome will let us know what that is. We can pull the data out and support the kid. That will be exciting work for, for HSD. And then summer school. We don't know what summer school funding looks like yet, but we know that summer school.
Presentation.
Oh, we did? Oh, okay. Good.
Real polished.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we don't know the impact. But we know Travis did well. Superintendent Reitman did well.
On there, lad? They were down there yet?
Yeah, there you go.
I know Brooke did well.
Summer school is truly is a game changer for us. If, in Hillsborough, it's, it's part of our schooling experience. It's an important part of our.
Are we still, it's just shy of 19,000 or a week total?
Totally, yeah.
We're about 18,000.
Two.
We're still, still at 19, 23.
City View gets bumped up the numbers, but then in our schools. The state counts them in our enrollment for our district, but obviously they're not in our school. Our schools, we have about.
And just, you know, as I, as I summarize my part before we go to final questions, the work in our buildings is truly stellar. And as we look at our students, the work of the students and the drive of the students is, is inspirational. And we should be proud of this, of these graduation datasets, because they're really good. Questions?
No questions? Any questions? No, no, I don't mind.
Go ahead.
When it comes to students post-graduation, once they have graduated or once they're walking, about to walk, as they're walking out the door, but as they're starting to, you know, put on their gowns, as they're metaphorically about to walk out the door, what information do we have from the students themselves on how they experienced a graduation? How were they informed and how to keep on track? What was the best method they could use? Students oriented at recent, what information do we have on that?
Yeah, so.
Do you want to, I was like, do you want to talk about maybe a senior survey?
Senior, senior access survey.
Sure. That's what you should administer.
Yes. I was like, that's where the career counselor at your school, there's a senior survey that goes out to every senior, and that's how they collect that data. And then if there's a student who identifies that they know what they're doing, then a meeting occurs with the school's career counselor, and the student's like, I saw this on the survey, how can we best support, how do we read it? And so that, that, I don't know what I'm doing changes something that then is in the range of career college rates.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yvette can attest to that?
Oh, yes.
That's my performance. No, but did help me.
Awesome. When, when I look at the graph slide, the blue and red line, from 19 to 23, and we got very close to the state average in 21, like most people did. A compliment I made, and I'm, I'm glad to see we are where we are. I think we've gotten pretty used to, in our community, outperforming our demographics. I think that's the work of y'all. Like, you guys do that. So glad to see we're back to outperforming our demographics.
Any other questions? No, it's okay. No, no, it's, it's great.
Yes, Yvette? So I, I'm wondering, in a similar vein, do we have any way to follow up with students, like after their senior year, if they're doing like summer school, to do catch-up credits and things like that? How effective or how prepared they feel if they go into college, they go into a trade or whatever? Do we have any of that kind of data to say, you know, I feel, I felt prepared and ready and successful in pursuing whatever path they chose?
I mean, I feel this. Sure, sure.
Senior area.
Sure. Again, in the senior survey, there is an area that says, if, you know, can we reach out to you after graduation and how would best it contact you? So students do have that opportunity. I, I do think though, and this is something where, where we capture some of that through the National Clearinghouse data, but that isn't the, the best local and immediate data. I think there is a challenge in our state, and it is trying to figure out the ownership of this. Does it, does it land with HEAP? Does it land in the Higher Education Commission to, you know, we have done our job as a school district, and so now will you capture that data and produce reports on our behalf? Does that lie somewhere in workforce to somehow capture as people are going into different careers and, and bring that back to school? So have we made an attempt to try to do that? Kind of, but to get something that's really accurate and clear, currently, we just can land on the Clearinghouse data. We do have a database where we can reach out to students, but it would be great if as a state, there was a system of this question that I think every district should be asking, and getting some sort of data back that helps them to make changes within their K-12 system to improve, to improve that experience for students.
Yeah, the data we're missing is the students that go into the trades and if they're still successful. The Clearinghouse data will give us university and community college data, but really the kids that are going into a gap year or going into trades, there's no mechanism to collect that information.
I literally asked this question of Brooke last week, because I, the same thing came, came to me as well. And I was like, and, and it sounds like other states actually have a mechanism at the state level to do this, because there is a lot of, when we talk about the K-12 funding, and this would take, this takes funding and time and a lot of energy, and we're also wanting to focus on K-12s that we currently have, and where do their priority, priorities lie on that. But I literally asked the same question last week to her, to be like, how do we know?
Right. Right. Yeah, it would, that would be great data to know and, and really give us some super feedback and saying how effective we are being and how successful we're being. You know, it's great that we're getting them across the finish line to finish their, their high school education and get their diploma, but it'd also be great data to know, yes, that the things that we're doing are effective in real application.
Yep. And there are statewide conversations about how are we measuring student success after, like, what is the way, it's not the answer, but unemployment rate in December in Washington County was 3.9%. So, but it, like, how, how do you measure whether or not you're successful after they graduate? Is a conversation that they're having statewide. And if.
Because for your college, my, is not necessarily the, the right idea.
For your college might not be, yeah. So I don't know that, I don't think it's an active question. I don't think it, I don't think it's a question. Figure out who is, who answers the question is going to be my challenge, right? But it would be great to have that question answered with that trigger following along with state discussions or federal discussions about these topics of accountability and data. And I would suggest, I appreciate the Mark slide. I'm going to keep asking for it for as long as I can. I think a lot of the statewide conversation and national conversation, doing a poor, let me be careful, not accurately reflecting the continuing fallout from the pandemic. I think a lot of the, a lot of the discussions I've seen lately, in my, in one person's view, don't accurately reflect the continuing fallout.
And I think we heard that tonight.
Yeah.
You know, a real life junior, junior in high school reinforced that.
Anything from CNN or Erica?
No questions, just phenomenal work. Really excited about the numbers and really making sure that we're supporting every student across the finish line. So, well done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you. And from the time we have now, Nancy is going to give us an update later, next time around, because she's going to have more updates as well. So we're going to go ahead and move that for next board meeting, which brings us to discussion time. And we will start off with our student rep. Gwen?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate just how, or whoa, I just wanted to say how good this meeting has been. And I think, I think it's so good to see the improvement that's been going on COVID. And also, I just want to reiterate how good it would be to make sure to get those, like, resources around base, race-based bullying and, like, conflict onto, like, Google Classroom and more platforms around schools. Uh, yeah, I'm glad to be here.
I'm so glad to be here. They have missed the last meeting, I think for finals, but I'm very glad I get to be here and see you all again. For the Black Village Dinner Discussion, I also still, still fervently agree with Gwen on adding them to Google Classroom. That is the number one hub I've seen students use for, for resources. And it will likely be there until they, from the moment they walk in the classroom, day one, and as long as they, as long, as teachers continue to provide that resource at the start of semester, the start of the year, every single time they enter a new class, they will have access to that information readily until they leave HSD. And I also want to mention that it is a new semester. There's a lot more energy in the classroom. People are thinking about what, what was on the last report card, and they're, you know, in their minds now that they've seen it on paper. So I'm glad to be a board with the board.
So I absolutely loved contributing to discussion today. I felt like sharing stories and memories I, as well as many other students had formed. It's something that I really wanted to be able to do as a student representative. I feel like that is where I've found I'm happiest on the board doing this. I think that I can put emotional weight on a lot of things that are data points or are Google slides. Like, I feel like it's really important to have those stories. And so I definitely invite future student representatives to have access to giving those in discussion time, because there's been times where I just only speak at the very end. But I feel like adding stories, adding opinions is something that is really important for, I think that in the future, we should ask for these stories from other student representatives, because everyone who was in, in HSD at the time of COVID hit has their own different story that they share pretty much with the rest of their class, which is like 30 or more kids nowadays, from what we're hearing from HEA. So that's a large amount of people, and everyone has a different story. There aren't that many stories to keep track of, and if you think of one classroom. So it's important that we keep track of each one. I think that it's important that this level of attention is given to those future members as it is given to me and my fellow student representatives. I'm very thankful to have a board where I can sit and express, excuse me, how, how students perceive actions taken by the board. I think that's another piece that people like me in the future should have, is to express that. It's been a long meeting, so I think I'll just say thank you for listening to me. Thank you for listening to Cal and Gwen. Thanks for affording us respect at this table. I really hope we can help in the future. Thank you.
Cal, Superintendent Reit?
Your openness and your eloquent words, Cal. Appreciate it. Students, you guys have contributed big time to this meeting, so thank you.
Your openness and your eloquent words, Cal. Appreciate it. Students, you guys have contributed big time to this meeting, so thank you for being here. Um, get your tickets for the HSF gala. In the room where the magic happens is the new slogan. Um, I spent the last two days in Salem, um, one advocating with, um, Brooke Nova for summer school funding. One with Claudia Rizzo-Mendoza, who does our, um, liaisoning with the Partners for Apprenticeship. And Jonathan Colon from Centro Cultural talking about partnerships being the secret to opening doors for students. And so those are highlights of the last two days. The lowlights are a lot of anxiety around what might happen with, um, changes at the federal level. And so ODE is, um, putting out documentation to talk to us about how to support students. And also coming up with some what if areas regarding federal program funding. And we will commit to, um, forwarding those to the school board, likely through board updates, so that you all can understand what's happening, even if it's not, even if it's potentialities and not yet happening. There's a lot of legal challenges happening to the, um, actions being taken against federal, um, program. Um, the stance right now also among leaders is please wait to panic and please wait to cut programs before the legal actions play out. I think we would be wrong to pull back funding right now for our federal programs. Um, but it sure is alarming, some of the headlines that we're hearing, um, in the news. In fact, COSA came up, they asked school districts and community based organization partners to document the areas of funding. Where we do any federal programs related education. And the top few, you know the names of, but there's a list of 20 plus that would affect city-based organizations that are just grant dollars from federal programs that help our kids. Um, so please rely on us for information. If you have questions. Uh, if, if you want to wait for board updates where we push out the documentation that's coming from our state level organizations, that'll be happening. And we're lucky to have some valid leaders at the state level who are protecting how we support kids in Oregon. The shrinking of the, uh, the graduation rate gap to 1.5 percentage points between our white, you know, students is a huge milestone for the Hillsborough School District. And when folks are asking me what HSD, there's a little list in my head that includes dual language programming since preschool and kindergarten in Spanish and English. Migrant summer school and migrant programs that help students whose families work in the field or in the cannery or at the nursery. ELD programs and the fact that every teacher in Hillsborough has some level of training in language acquisition and scaffolding academic language for students who are, um, learning CTE programs that are demographically representative of our student body. And summer programs where kids got more credits in HSD than any other school district for high school graduation in the state. So proud of what we're doing. So thank you, especially Brooke and David and Audrey for the work that you all do in all those different spheres. Um, the whole team, actually. This is a lot of work from kindergarten through safe and welcoming schools, all the work that we're doing in HSD. And we have a word, I said this earlier, that supports us where I go home thinking, you've got my back and you have the back of our staff when we change these programs to make them more culturally and linguistically responsive for students. So thank you for your support and your leadership.
Thank you. Um, now we'll go to the board and we'll start off online. Um, here?
Nothing for me tonight. Just really appreciate the conversations and the presentations tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica?
Same for me. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your presentations tonight.
Money?
Yeah, I have nothing tonight. Thanks, everyone.
Wow. Nancy?
I have nothing.
Mark?
Looking forward to seeing, uh, many of you at the HSF Gala. I believe I got an email notification today that my, is the 25th silver anniversary that my sparkly silver jacket has arrived at. Think I'm ready finally. Uh, I look forward to seeing that list of the 25 programs, um, that you're gonna share and update, cause I'm curious about. Yeah, we don't, we don't think, but it, it doesn't. And I think anybody who tells you they know what's gonna happen next at the federal level, I think is lying to you, cause I don't think anybody knows. Um, but all we can do is prepare the best we can. For those of you planning to attend the Black History Month celebration, I think it's the 20th, right? Not, I think one slide says 20 seconds. Uh, it's Thursday, right? Yeah, Thursday. That is also the night of the Hillsborough State of the City address. Um, so I'll try to do both. If I can get back from Salem, time to do both. And then, yeah, uh, Hot News is a great resource as always. We are in spring play season. Uh, there was a great list of all the plays and the dates and times of them in this week's edition of Hot News yesterday. So please check it out and help us see one of our school performances.
Thank you, Mark. Um, I just wanted to say thank you and thank you to the camera team for all the work that you do and all the presentations. And, um, be very proud of the graduation rates and you guys just keep setting your guys' self, like the bar is higher every single time and it's, and it's great to see. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned at 8:54.